Okay, I'm going to open the school public hearing with a roll call. Sandra Coleman?
Here.
Anne Barney?
Here.
David Jonas?
Here.
David Drew?
Here.
Lee Nichols is absent with notice and KB will be late because he had a call. Would you please stand for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under our individual liberty and justice. I'm going to turn this over to Mary Moriarty, who is the superintendent of schools. She works on this all year long with Trish Tepperino, so I'm gonna let Mary.
Certainly, Mrs. Avery is a big part of this as well. And I have packets here just to make sure everybody has a coffee. All right, so we have the budget proposed for 2324. And the page one is an overview of the budget. Some highlights are this budget has an increase of $129,579, or 3.11% over last year's voted budget. Health insurance is an increase of 7.1%, that's a guaranteed maximum rate. The guaranteed maximum rate for 2022 was 7.1 and came in at 7.1. So we are not sure what will happen in the coming year, but that's what they've told us is our guaranteed maximum rate. Dental insurance is 1.5. Regular education, we would like to maintain through school district funds, the academic intervention teacher. This was initially funded through Esser Funds for the 2122 and 2223 school years. The total cost of this additional teacher is $118,759. The academic intervention teacher has been an incredible help and support here as we continue to close unfinished work. Curriculum and development, we are eager to propose a literacy curriculum program, and this would be for grades K through eight, into reading K to five, and into literature six through eight. This is broken into two installments. The total cost is $63,000. Installment one would be in the 2324 budget at $32,000. Curriculum and development had an increase in instructional salaries by $3,250. We are shifting what we have used grant funds for to help support stipends for teachers to do curriculum work beyond their normal day. This will allow us to use those title grant funds to keep our Title I funds whole. Title I funding continues to decrease from the federal government and the state. This allows us to shift other grant funds into Title I so we can maintain the Title I teacher that we have. And this is year two for the collective bargaining agreement. So last year, the community, very grateful, supported a collective bargaining agreement for our teachers, and this is year two of that agreement. The school board did approve last year and has included in this proposed budget three additional holidays, or three holidays, and the only holidays that school year staff will receive. Fuel, as we all know too well, has increased by almost $29,000 in electricity by close to $7,000 from the previous budget. The salary pool for non-union staff is a salary pool at a base on a 5% increase. Facilities, we are only proposing operating budget. The school board did not decide to move forward with any warrant articles specific for any other capital improvement plans. The gymnasium heating system is being worked on with some of the previous funds, and we have put a pause on the final phase of the playground. Any questions on those? Quick, Kelly. The next page provides a breakdown of the budget, just shows you where the majority of the budget is, as it is, it's people, we're in the people business, salaries and benefits. Contracted services is next, which is often people as well. So that just gives you a breakdown of the changes by the different areas and again represents a 3.11% increase. The next page is just another version of that, showing you where the increases and decreases are. And so if you look under books, supplies, and equipment, that $38,000, so a big part of that is that new literacy program. The next page is the green page. These are our estimated revenues, and this is where I think people will feel a significant change. It is estimated that our adequate education grant from the state, which was last year $814,000 plus $1,000, is estimated for 2324 at $603,000. So that's, you know, over a $200,000 difference. That has an impact on then what locally needs to be raised by taxes. So if you follow that down, you'll notice that the change between the two, when you look at the various potential unreserved fund balance, which is lower than the previous year, with that $200-plus $1,000, that looks like a 14.22% increase over what needs to be raised locally. And so that has a $1.61 estimated impact on the tax rate. The next page gives you a better sense of what that means for the individual homeowner. So you have total expense change, total revenue decrease, net increase assessment for the operating budget compared to what had to originally be raised by taxes, the assessed value, that works out to $161.06 per year for a home that is estimated or assessed at $100,000, or $13.42 per month. The pink pages are the various line items. Certainly, people want to take a look at page one if there's any questions in a few Page two. There are nine pages, so maybe I'll just pause. I'm gonna give you, yes?
Earlier, I should have asked earlier when you said the literacy program?
Yes.
$38,000. Is that for books, or what is that for?
So it is actually, the cost for the first installment is $31,000. There's some other adjustments to books and supplies. And do you want to speak, Kelly, to the comprehensive program that it is?
Sure. We're paying for two years for a six-year program.
Okay.
It includes books, supplies, all the teaching materials, all the teachers.
Online materials?
Online materials, a platform for, it's similar to the platform we use in math, so the kids already know the platform and accessing it. So paying for two years for a six-year program.
Okay.
So one of the benefits is we were able to do a reduction, I think of about $8,000 on a subscription, an online subscription we used to purchase for literacy. We were able to decrease that because this program has that, so we don't have to purchase something separate.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Does anybody have any questions for Mary?
If everybody's comfortable, I mean, you've just received it, so I know, don't want to rush anybody, and if you have questions after the fact, certainly reach out. I will just highlight one thing. On page nine, the budget committee did vote to put a dollar in for homeless transportation. We had started last year an expendable trust for homeless transportation. The dollar would allow us, if we needed to move funds into those lines. I do want to, our office did roll over, school board is $1, they will be voting on that tomorrow night to see about that additional dollar. The white pages are draft warrant articles. So there are two school board members for the ensuing three years, a moderator for the ensuing three years. Actually, we corrected that, no moderator, right? But moderator should have come off, my apologies, we have a moderator. And article three is the operating budget. You'll notice the default budget is higher, and I will talk, speak to that in just a moment. Article four, the school board is recommending a no vote on article four. It is a right of first refusal relative to the old school building, and this is being done to assist the process for the library, but the school board is recommending a no vote.
Mary, did you question the attorney on that, remember?
I did, and so the attorney has recommended, adjusting it to a five-to-zero majority of the Ashland School Board recommends a no vote, and so we're hoping the budget committee will be the same, that that might be clearer than what we previously presented. The next section is the default budget. The default budget is calculated by looking at our adopted budget from '22, '23. We add any contractual and mandated amounts, we subtract out any appropriations that were one-time, and then we have our amount, and that becomes, the total of that becomes the default budget. In this case, that is $4,303,509 for an increase from the proposed operating budget of $6,644. The next page is a critical page. This allows us to notice the public. These are all active contracts. By noticing the public, that allows us to include them in the default budget as we move forward. So you have leases for our technology, our waste management, trash removal, snow plowing, fuel oil, transportation, and the capital improvement plan, which is also attached. So the capital improvement plan is attached. The only thing that has been proposed for this coming year, again, is continued maintenance. We have deferred any other longer-term projects. We are in the process of completing a very large ventilation project, which we are incredibly grateful to the help and support of the town of Ashland. Thank you, Mr. Moore, for your help, has been immense in moving us forward with that. But the capital improvement plan is attached for your review, and that allows us for future to, again, be relative to the default budget included in the future years. And I will let you peruse, and then certainly happy to take any questions.
Bobby has a question.
I don't understand the library one, that article four. It's the right, in the beginning, it's the vote to exercise the right of refusal, saying the school doesn't want that building, correct?
So it's-
But then it says, "and to appropriate," all right, so they don't want that, "and to appropriate the amount of $400,000 by raising the tax."
Or has previously said that they do not want the option to buy the building. The indicated that as part of the purchase and sale, that the district, meaning all the voters of the district-
Right, right.
-should all be part of that.
Oh.
So that's how it is presented. Do you want the right of first refusal to buy this building, and if you're saying you want to buy it, this is what it would cost, and the school board is very adamant in their recommendation of a vote of no. The school board has indicated that they do not want to purchase the building.
Okay.
And this is really a step forward in the purchase and sale portion for the library.
Okay.
Hopefully, I've indicated that in a fair way.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions? After the public hearing, the town public, the school public hearing, the town public hearing, we will have a meeting to vote on everything. So Mary, I'll get back to you first.
Yeah, it'll be lovely, thank you.
Okay. There's no other questions for the school? Okay, there being no other questions, I'm going to close the school public hearing at 6:16 PM. Thank you, Mary, thank you, Kelly. Might be a good idea, and I'll take them in case somebody wants.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job. Okay, I'm going to open the town public hearing at 6:17 PM. Everybody should have a copy of the budget, hopefully. If you notice, it's pretty level-funded that the department did a good job on it this The only thing that's different, the town clerk tax collector had $5,500 in for the ballot coding, and she said all she needed was $3,500, so we did take $2,000 out of that.
For ballot voting, is it coding?
I believe most of the department heads are here tonight, if anybody has any questions. Bobby?
I don't have a question, I'd just like to make a statement, I think, with this being a public hearing, the school board gave us a full budget. I realize this budget is a lengthy, very long ages. I think it would have been kind of forthcoming to the citizens to have one budget, a full budget. You're asking, you know, this is the public hearing, this is the summary of all the different departments, I just, I think it's a very important change to not at least have one available.
Melissa?
I've been told that that's not possible.
Melissa?
I made one available, but parts of it got taken.
Okay.
There was a full copy here.
Okay.
Some random pages got taken out.
Okay, all right, I wasn't aware of that. The budget committee did meet with all the department heads separately, so that we could question them, and they all came at different times to the meeting, so I was happy I believe there are also warrant articles up here, was that, Melissa?
Yes.
Okay, if there aren't any questions, do you want me to, go ahead, Bobby?
Has the budget committee voted on these warrant articles?
Preliminary vote, we'll finalize it tonight when we have our-
Oh, oh, okay. I was just wondering what the, what the number was. I didn't know it was put in there. Thank you.
We have to have the public hearing-
Right.
-before we can follow up. Do you want me to go through the warrant articles individually, or how would you like this? That's you, doesn't matter to me either way. If you would like me to go through them individually, I will.
I-
Yep?
I looked at, just, I don't need to have to go through one individually, but I'm a little confused, and I realize it's a petition warrant, article number 23. It just says, "Accept Title V taxation property taxes for $750." $750 for what?
What article number is that?
33. I realize it's a petition warrant on the front.
From what I understand-
$750 for what?
From what I understand from the town manager, they did have it checked, and it is fine. It is for, it is for the veterans.
But it doesn't say that.
I know. That's the way that they had it. Is that am I right in saying that?
It was submitted that way. There will have to be an amendment on the floor to make it legal.
Right, right. Oh, that they said there'll have to be an amendment on the floor to make it legal?
Yes.
Because I would imagine people would have the same question.
It's just a little vague. Just a little.
When $750-
We had to say question. We had to-
Okay, thank you.
To summarize it up, I guess, it increases the amount of the veterans exemption from $250 to $750, I would say.
Okay. I realize with it being a petition warrant, I would feel like you do.
Yeah, we have to leave it in, but the council said it needs to be amended, and if it's not amended, it won't be a valid article.
Okay, all right. Good to know, thank you.
If you're going to amend it, Fred, does it have to be in writing?
Yes. We never dreamed of trying to amend something and not giving it a dollar or something.
I just wanted to make that clear, so that people would know that it has to be written out.
That's the only one I had that was not, not really clear.
I have a question. Will the town officials be presenting that amendment, or will that work?
If no one presents the amendment, the town council has worked out with us, an amendment that points to the statute. If the town wants to adopt that amendment, they can. You better wait to see if somebody else proposes an amendment first. This is really up to the body, not up to the government.
But you have something ready.
I do have something ready. There are actually two amendments to this warrant. If you look at it, 34, the last half of that, after Depot Street, and the next, the last line, everything after that will be deleted. Council has determined that in fact the warrant article passes, the town has no right to execute the usual warrant acquisition property.
So after Depot Street, there won't be any other wording?
Yeah, everything will be deleted after that.
Okay. Before the deliberation session, or at the-
At the deliberation, yes.
Okay, at the deliberation.
Again, in writing, and it will be adopted by the body.
Isn't this a similar, haven't we gone over this?
Four times.
I saw it, oh.
Yeah, there's a couple more like that, yeah.
Same room, same place.
Yeah.
Well, I should say something about article two. If that article does not pass, then there will be no flood zone in town, and there will be no flood insurance.
So we don't have article two here?
Yes, you do.
Mine starts with article seven. There was the one he gave us the other night, it doesn't start with article two.
You don't have the handout?
I didn't get it. Thank you, Bob. I have mine from the other night.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Does anybody else need one that starts? Okay. Mandy?
Yes, just to clarify beyond what Fred said on article two, it is wording that we currently have an article in the zoning ordinance that deals with flood hazard areas. This article is to update that wording to current federal required wording in order to continue in that program.
Thank you, Mandy.
Very important, we do.
And the highlighted and underlined portions is the portion that's going to be added?
Added, yes. And anything that has a cross-through is being deleted.
Okay.
I'm just gonna let you look through it, if you have a question, just raise your hand. Now, some of these that you've already recommended that's not on here will be the, at the SB two meeting? Everything will be there, that you guys recommended. Bobby?
Well, I guess I'm confused. The Ashland School District doesn't want the old building. Now, Article 31, shall the town vote to rescind the approval? I understand with this, rescind the approval, because it was approved. So I don't understand, I mean, the library still want to move-
That's a petition warrant article, the library still wants to buy the building. But there are people apparently don't want to buy the building, so.
But that isn't addressed anywhere, because it's a petition warrant.
Yeah, it is a petition warrant article, it should say that.
I realize this is a petition warrant article, but-
The town has already voted to buy the building last year, that article will stand unless it's rescinded, so.
If that article goes through to rescind it-
You mean this article 31?
Then it's dead. Then the sale is dead.
I think that's going to be hard to explain to you. I hope there are. No, I mean, I hope the town attorney is there to explain.
The town attorney will be, but-
That town attorney will be, if you have a question.
Mardine?
One general question. Um, as a budget hearing, we've had two budgets presented to us tonight. The school budget first, and they gave a very brief, but very well-done overview of what the increases and changes are, and the key elements of the budget. For the town budget, we've been handed the sheet, and there has been no explanation by anybody to give us any overview of the budget impact, budget changes. And I think going forward, I think that's a very strong suggestion. If you're going to do a bu- a budget hearing, there should be some explanation, some general overview, so that then people can have something to ask questions about. And I see that as a very short-sighted way to handle something, the way it was done tonight.
We did have them for at the budget hearing.
That, I.
I just wanted to let you know, we did have them then, but we don't have them tonight, I mean, for people.
At your budget committee meetings, you had some explanations. But still, the school also had their meetings with the school board where they went over all the parts. Budget committee did the same thing with the town budget. We get a nice succinct, but clear overview of what is in the school budget. We get no overview from the budget, from, as part of the budget hearing, on the town budget.
If you want the state to in fact give us the information that we could use to develop that, which the state private education gives the schools, then we could do that. But we don't know what we're going to get from the state, or what their rules are going to be, or appropriation, or anything else, until we go to the tax rate. There's a problem with that. It's, it's the way it works. I know. I helped set up the process because I was at the governor's commission to do that. And I objected to it then, I objected to it now. It's the wrong way to do things. But in fact, the state doesn't have the wherewithal to in fact give us a projection of what the money is that's going to be coming to the town, or how much it's going to be taken away from the town. To give you a good example of that, uh, the school just presented a very nice presentation, and I didn't see one word in there about the fact that in the next 10 years, there'll be no state-aided schools. I didn't hear that. When I was present for the committee hearings and for the, for everything else in Concord, where in fact the money that funds this comes from the public utilities of the state, which the towns are not allowed to tax. And those, those taxes are going to disappear after 30 years of age if any of the system is being taxed. The legislature passed that, so most of those systems are very close to ending the amount of taxation that we're going to be getting from them. So it's going to be very interesting for the school as well, once that happens. I objected to that, I still object to it, and I think the town should do something about it. But nothing's happening. Municipal Association's not sponsoring something to happen. Uh, the various counties are not sponsoring something to happen because they're going to get hurt too. Uh, all the cities and towns will be hurt. It's not the fault of the school. The school's done a very good job in trying to succeed in getting money brought back in. We have the same problem with the towns, except we don't find out until after September 1st what aid is going to be given to us by the state. All of the aid is going to be withheld. And I've been here when the governor actually withheld aid to the cities and towns by 100%. That can happen at any time, and it doesn't take an act of legislature to do it. So we don't know what the tax rate's going to be. We're going to try to keep it right where it is, uh, because we don't want to see it increase. But there's no way for us to forecast that in a reliable fashion when we come here, or in the.
Mardine?
I understand the difficulties in the revenue part. I'm talking more of, right now, the expense part of the budget. I am sure there are some differences, probably some substantial differences in some departments for expenditures. That's what I would have liked to have heard at any budget hearing, to understand how last year's budget expenditures, or budgeted expenditures, and how this year's proposed expenditures by departments or categories or something, how they differ.
Do you have any, any department in particular? Because the department heads are here tonight, if you have any question.
No, I'm talking about presentation. There really was no presentation on the town budget, other than piece of paper.
Well, I, just looking at the numbers, for instance, personnel administration. Last year was voted $461,960. This year it's $524,536. That's a pretty big increase. Seems like that might be something that might be talked about at a hearing.
What are you talking about?
Personnel.
Is that because of the five days of sick time? Marissa?
Uh, so that's the health insurance. So the same thing with the school, they have a maximum guaranteed rate. That's a 7.1% increase. We are also at a 7.1% increase. We didn't see the full amount assessed this year, so we have to budget for the maximum because we can't get over the maximum. So that is health insurance, sick buyout, uh.
Okay, it is, okay.
Yeah, it's, it's all got to do with employee benefits. Thanks for your time.
Unfortunately, less than our control.
Yeah, we don't control those numbers. They tell us, hey, you're going to get potentially this much, and we won't know until the close of the first quarter. We'll have to be, so they give you guidelines.
So even if, even if we were to do something here, we won't know, that is deliberative session, and we change it so the budgets change when we get to the, the actual vote. We won't know until after April 1st what money we've got to pay in order to keep the insurance. And we're required by law to have it. Those are little things that drive us kind of crazy, uh, trying to figure out what's going on. We try to make deals with the insurance companies, uh, to make sure that we aren't going to be held captive to something that we don't know anything about. In most cases, they work with us, in some cases, they can't.
Alice?
So it looks like Parks and Rec went from, what, $140,000 to $106,200. An explanation for that?
Actually, Parks and Rec has put on additional services, and I will make this comment so everybody understands it. Uh, they, they do do additional services because they've been required to do that for the children in the community. Uh, Parks and Rec has no impact on the tax rate. They raise more money than they spend, so that money goes to the increase of taxes.
And also, she had to increase the number of employees, Alice, because of the number of children that they had. Is it eight? Or?
That's one to eight ratio.
Right.
Yeah. I appreciate the explanation. That's just what we're asking for.
Oh, I understand. I just want to make sure you understood.
I do, thank you.
Bobby?
And also, at the deliberative session, to Mardine's point, is this what's going to be available for people? Just a summary. She?
Marissa, are we going to have more for them?
Yep, you'll have the full, last year recommendations.
Okay.
We did make a full one, like I said, missing pages got taken out of it. Um, but yeah, we will have the full one.
Because I think those are valid points, very valid.
Are you going to make a copy of the narratives?
If you'd like, we do.
I'm just thinking, when I hear what Bobby and Alice and Mardine are saying, this narrative for each department shows what it's for.
We don't even know what that is.
Well, I'm just saying, I wonder if maybe they should make copies of this for the deliberative session.
What is that that you're holding?
It, it's a, it's a narrative of, uh, different department heads, yes.
That's one way to do this.
This is actually the, this is a.
That's exactly what Mardine, I believe, was.
This is actually the sewer department. I just picked that one up. But there is a narrative for each department. Each department had.
It'd be very helpful to the.
Did that individually so that we would know, you know, what it is. Fred?
In the past, they have formed a, a brief summary of that, the narratives that we get for this hearing and for the next one. If we could do that, that would be great.
Yeah, but for this hearing, you're not going to.
Fred, what did you have to say?
That narrative is, here it is. This is, this is what we provide in pieces to the budget committee as we go through the year, okay? This explains the budget. Uh, yeah, we could, we could produce it, we could, I don't know how many people showed up, how many, but if 100 showed up, we could make 100 copies.
Probably about 35.
Well, then maybe we could make 35.
Yeah, because that's usually how many. You can make some extra.
Take a look at historical records.
Did that answer your question, Mardine?
I think I know your question.
Okay. Are there, is there anything else that anybody would like to offer, or any questions?
Are we doing the warrant articles?
We do that? You have to do that at the meeting?
Not me, for the public, are we going to?
I asked, and they said no, they were fine.
Oh, everybody's all set for them?
Yeah. Thank you for the department heads for coming tonight. I really appreciate it. Fred, thank you, and Marissa for your help. Bob? Okay, so what will happen at the meeting that we go into, we will vote. That's why I asked you for any questions now, because during the voting, there won't be questions from the audience, it will just be the voting. Okay, I'm going to adjourn the town public hearing at 6:41 PM. Do we need to go, do we need a break? Does anybody need a break before we go into the other meeting? Okay, we'll go into the town meeting. Well, town and school, you want to do school first? It doesn't matter tonight.
I'll be here all morning.
Okay, we'll do the town first. 6:42 PM. Okay, remember, we did the preliminary one, but we really have to finalize it tonight.
Well, aren't we going to do it by article? Because that's where the recommendations are going to be.
We're going to do the budget.
Well, the budget is actually in four different articles.
I know that, but I'm talking about the budget right now, I want to mention that. Because we deducted $2,000 off of their budget.
Already taken it off.
Right. I don't have the new one, I have.
Who does this?
Thank you.
This is the new budget.
Oh, it's a new budget?
$3,133,907. Hey, it matches. Okay, that's what I wanted to check on, David.
Oh, good.
The numbers matching.
So, um.
Do you want to do, why have I got, I can't shut it off. There we go.
Well, I'm making a motion on Article Three, which is the main town budget. Ian, $133,907.
It's okay, we've got to get to Article Three. Okay.
KB, second.
Motion was made by David Rule to accept a $3,133,907, seconded by Kendall Hughes. Is there any questions or discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Sandra?
Nay.
Nay? Oh, I should have said aye too.
You announce the vote for us.
Five to one. And Marissa, when we finish this tomorrow morning, I will email you everything. Okay. Okay, Article Four.
Well, I'll move $3,440,976. I'm sorry, I added money there. $3,494.
Okay, most.
My figure's right.
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion was made by David Rule to recommend Article Four, $3,440,794, seconded by Ian Barney. Are there any questions, or any comments? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Six to zero, David. Okay, Article Five, the Ashland Water Department. Do I have a motion?
I'll move $375,325.
Okay, I'll second that. Motion is made to recommend Article Five for $375,325. Uh, excuse me. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Everybody. KB, did you?
Aye.
Okay. Six to zero, David. Article Six, the Ashland Sewer Department?
I'll move $838,476.
Do I have a second?
Yes, you do.
Motion was made by Kendall Hughes to recommend $838,476 for Article Six, seconded by David Rule. Are there any questions, or any comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Five to one, David. Article Seven, shall the town of Ashland vote to approve the cost items included in the collective bargaining agreement reached between the Ashland Water Slotman and the SEIU Local 984 Union? Now, remember, this is the one where they took some out of the surplus fund, is that correct?
Yes.
Do I have a motion?
I move the article as written.
I'll second that.
I move to recommend the article as written.
Re- yeah, recommend. Okay, David Rules recommended, uh, the article as, Article Seven as written, seconded by Jeanette Stewart. Are there any questions or comments?
Why was some of the money taken out of the undesigned funds?
So that it, it's because of the tax rate, right?
To reduce the tax rate, yes.
To lower the tax rate?
No. It does not increase the tax rate. If this was left in, the tax rate would increase. We don't want the tax rate to increase, so the money has been allocated because we had, um, one and a half million dollars to allocate towards appropriations.
But the undesigned funds, are they not taxes that people have paid?
They are prior taxes that people.
So people are paying it one way or another, whether from undesigned funds or?
The difference is that if you don't take it from the assigned fund balance, it will go on the current used tax rate. So you, you will not be getting the benefit of what you have saved the prior years. I'm going to have to double please.
Are we taking any of that money of undesigned funds to lower the tax rate after everything has been voted on?
That depends upon what the state gives us for revenues, if they give us for revenues. We won't know that till September. We're trying to keep the right balance.
To keep one and a half million dollars in undesigned funds, it takes approximately $265,000 to lower the tax rate by a dollar?
I can't tell you that because I don't have a calculator, but that sounds like a reasonable figure. You know, that we've been keeping the tax rate level for the last two years.
We're one of the highest taxpayers towns in the state of New Hampshire. If we took and the.
I don't believe you are.
If we took at least half of that money, we could lower the tax rate by $2.
Do you want to lower the tax rate or would you like to beat your employees? I mean, that's what this article is about. We went five years without giving any raises whatsoever, and we're losing employees faster than we can hire them. And that's why this article is here. It's written, and the union is backing it, and so are the employees. We're trying to keep things level.
I do understand that, but I don't understand your statement saying that no one has received a raise in five years.
The town has not voted a general cost of living increase in five years.
For town employees.
But they have received like a 3% raise, right?
They've received money from individual departmental budgets from justified by the selectmen. That's not the point. The point is that the other towns around us are hiring our employees away. Just recently, we had no employees in the electric light department because we were paying so very little for those employees to work for us. If that should continue, we would have to bankrupt the department and maybe the town.
How many employees do we have in the electric department?
Well, we've got two in the office, and right now, we have two full-time employees working for the electric light department. That's not sufficient to run the department.
And they are both certified employees to go out to do whatever it is, including the superintendent?
No, they're not. They're not. We have one certified employee. If we want to go out and do line work, we have to hire somebody from another electric light department. We do have a job all week, and we are looking for a to hire that person, but we have to go through all the procedures that are required by law to do that. Until we hire that person, we have to go out to another department to bring a person in so we can do the work. So if you have an outage, you're not going to get your outage turned on until we get somebody to come in from another light department.
Is a superintendent not qualified to go out to?
He's not a lineman.
The superintendent is qualified for the job he does, but not for doing line work.
Right. He's not supposed to be climbing posts.
Someone's hired.
He's not a certified lineman.
Oh, he's hired to do paperwork. Excuse me.
And others.
I'm going to say this because our chief is here, Chief Steve Heath. You're a department head, are you not? Do you do paperwork? Do you also go out? You're qualified to go out as an EMT, as to. I see. All right. Thank you.
How long has the superintendent been here with the electric department?
Over a year. Not quite here, but just about that.
So he hasn't been with the department that long?
No, he hasn't. He's not a certified lineman. There's a big difference.
There is a big difference.
Does this article cover any superintendents?
No.
Okay. Just the workers?
Just the workers that are in the union, yes.
From what I understand, though, they're looking to hire, what, three more people?
Yes. We need two Class A linemen. We need a Class B lineman and a groundman at the minimum.
So that's four. Do you have any more questions, Sandra?
No. My question's.
Okay, Article 6. Oh, no. I'm sorry. Article 7. The motion was made by David Rule to recommend Article 7. Seconded by Jeanette Stewart. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Five to one, David.
Article 9. I remove Article 9. For 25,000.
Seconded. Now, this is another one that's coming from the unassigned fund balance, correct?
Yes. As you've been doing this every year, yes.
Yep. Are there any questions or comments?
Have we ever had in the past five years a surplus of $1,500,000?
I had one last year, the year before this year or something.
And we had a contingency fund of 25,000?
Which comes from that 1.5 million, and it was not used because of that. It's sort of a safety valve in case something happens.
Is it actually big enough if something really bad happens?
No. There's a provision in the regulations, the IRA regulations, that you have to pay the costs and expenses that the town incurs. Now, if that means that you go, let's say, 50,000 or 75,000 over your budget because you're required to by law, that's a deficit spending. And the law says you have to raise that 75,000 or whatever it is at the following town meeting, whether you want to or not, or it will be assessed by the town revenue. It gets you taxed. That's one thing we don't control. Just like we don't control lawsuits and things of that nature. We don't sue people if they sue us. Unfortunately.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of to recommend Article 9, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Nay.
Five to one, David. Article 10?
It's not for us. It's not appropriations. I suppose we can vote on it.
Article 10, Article 11 are not appropriations.
I didn't hear you.
Article 10 and Article 11 are not appropriations.
Right, but we could vote on them if we wanted to, but I guess nobody thinks a lot of it, so.
I'll move Article 12.
Okay.
I'll second Article 12.
Kendall made the motion to recommend Article 12. Seconded by David Rule. Are there any questions or comments? Okay, there'd be no questions or comments. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? KB?
Aye.
Okay, six to zero.
I'll move Article 13.
I'll second that. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor of recommending Article 13 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Everybody say aye.
Yes.
Six to zero.
I'll move Article 14, please, the capital reserve.
Okay, motion was made by David Rule. I'll second it. To recommend Article 14. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Six to zero, David. We don't have to vote on Article 15.
I will move Article 16, the library capital reserve.
Motion was made to recommend Article 16 by David Rule. Is there a second?
I'll second.
David Rule made the motion to recommend Article 16. Seconded by David Uranus. Are there any questions or comments?
How much is in that fund now?
700. Didn't you nail that around? I think it was 120.
Yeah, 20, 125?
Yes, that sounds in the ballpark, roughly, yes.
That was like 125, I think. Do you know, Marissa?
I don't. The trust, did the trust fund have those numbers? But I think, didn't you get an email that had that?
We did, and I think it was 125, I think it was 121 something.
It was 136. So not the same.
It was 135 last year.
It might be 130 by now, yes. I'm sorry, I didn't remember.
So you guys had originally put 25, but the library came and asked to move it to 15? Any particular reason why you went down?
We were being conservative about it.
Okay, I apologize for doing that. I'm just asking a question because historically, we would put 25 in.
Well, it's very hard for us to predict renovation. The renovation of the rest of the building was a lot worse, so that's why we went to 15, so. You know, the inflation in the construction industry, it's just.
Oh, I understand. That's exactly why I'm asking this question. I also know that the Slatman had cut what you had asked on the other side, too.
Well, yes. Well, what happened on the other side was a function of the budgeting process, really.
Yeah, I understand that.
Yeah.
Explain the other side. I don't know what.
They had asked for 100 and something thousand.
Right.
And the Slatman put it back to 88,000 last year. We put it back to 88,000 as a budget committee for a preliminary one because the budget that they made up, or that they did, rather than it being for six months, which they said they probably wouldn't be until July, it was a budget for a whole year.
Right. Well, see, we did the budget in August of last year, and at that point, we thought the purchase and sales agreement might go through within 2022, and you might need the whole, we might be in the building for the entire 2023. So we've actually looked at our budget again, and we figure, now assuming it's going to be much later in the year, that we probably won't actually be occupying the building to the very end of the year, and probably not until next year. So we figured we could get by by 9,000 to 10,000 for whatever the additional cost.
So you have enough money to do it then?
What?
So this allows you enough money to do what you need to do?
For the renovations, yes, but on the budget side, I don't know if we're still talking about that. We actually got an offer of a donation of 10,000, which would cover those expenses, an anonymous donation, if the building is purchased in this year, the 2020s. So we're actually, we discuss, we're off what we're talking about now, but the library trustees can live within the budget, the 88,000 that was proposed.
And this 15 is fine?
And the 15? We're going to see what it costs.
Okay.
Yeah, so we're just, we know we probably need more, but we, we'll see what happens.
Okay.
It's hard to predict at this point.
Okay, are there any other questions or comments? All those in favor of Article 16 signify by saying aye.
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 Six to zero, David.
I'll move Article 17.
KB is moving to recommend Article 17.
Public Works Capital Reserve.
Seconded by Jeanette Stewart. Are there any questions or comments?
What is, can you tell me what is, how much is in this capital reserve for the public works? I believe they need to purchase a vehicle, do they not?
Yeah, they spend it right down to nothing, and then go up and get some more. Just a lot of funds.
They'll need to purchase a power truck next year, right?
Yeah. Yeah, it's kind of bold.
Are there any other questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
David, did you say aye?
Yes.
Six to zero. 125,000 for Article 18. Usually they put that in every year. I'm going to make a motion to recommend it.
I'll second the motion.
Motion was made by Jeanette Stewart, seconded by David Rule, to recommend Article 18. Are there any questions or comments?
I'd like to know how much is in that article. 125,000 is a lot of money.
This is for paving of the roads. They spend a lot of money.
Yeah, so we almost pleaded it this year. I think we have, it's under 30,000. I can't say the exact figure, but with the Winter Street project and the bridge project, that was a very expensive one that came in at about 199,000. So it does get used.
Oh, I'm sure it does.
But I will say, we've known from the state that all of our bridges in town are on the up and up, and we're in the few communities that actually have bridges that are cleared by the state.
Did they also use that fund when they did the sidewalks?
They did, but they had a TAP grant, so this covered the portion that was not covered by the TAP grant.
Okay.
Because there was a certain percentage that the town was responsible for. So, yes, they did.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, Article 18 was recommended by Jeanette Stewart, seconded by David Rule. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Six to zero.
I'll move 19, the Building Maintenance or Repair Fund. That's not much money.
I'll second it. Motion made by David Rule to recommend Article 19, seconded by Jeanette Stewart. Any questions or comments?
It says to repair all town buildings. Is that every building in town that is owned by Ashland?
By the town.
By the town.
It probably doesn't improve the house.
Emergency maintenance.
No, we've never gotten any. Right, potentially.
Yeah, but are they going to use this for the new library?
No. That's a separate fund. Library is a separate fund, not part of this 10,000.
Then who would own that building?
The library has control of the library building.
But who would own the building?
The building is owned by the town, but the town has no control over it.
All right, then this is not written correctly because it does say all town buildings. And if the library is owned by the town, then that money can be used for that building because it is a town building.
Well, the ripple houses also a town building.
So is the American Legion.
Yep.
We can't use it for those purposes because they're under contract from the town to other individuals.
You don't own the American Legion building, though. You own the parking lot, correct?
I think we own the building, too.
I don't think so.
No, I don't think so.
You own the land around, but not the structure.
That's correct.
Not the structure.
In any event, we can't spend any money on the library because the law precludes it. The statute is very, very firm about public libraries, that they have complete, total control of all the funds given to them by the town, and they're the only ones that can do any work on a public building. It's all controlled by the library until they surrender it to the town, then it becomes a town hall.
And that's why they have the library trustees. That's what the trustees do.
Referred to as the other board of selectmen.
Right. And it's the same thing with the school. The school has their own board. We can't. And it's the same thing with the school, the school has their own board, we can't spend money with them.
That's correct.
But that building is not owned by the town.
That's probably the reason the historical system, the Wipple House doesn't put under this.
It is.
Because the Wipple House is run by the historical.
It's an organization under agreement with town meeting.
Yes.
Okay, are there any other questions or comments? Okay, we're voting on Article nineteen, recommended by David Rule, seconded by Jeanette Stewart. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Nay.
Five to one, David. The reason I'm saying five to one, David asked me if I'd let him know what the vote is.
Well, I think you should let everybody know.
But the reason I'm saying aye is.
Okay.
Okay, so the next one, Article twenty, is not a money, right?
Uh, weren't we at fifteen?
What? What did you say?
We were on.
We were on nineteen.
We just did Article nineteen.
Oh, sorry.
Are you going backwards?
I am.
Okay.
And next one is Article twenty-two.
Okay. Sorry. I'll move Article twenty-two for the Bridge House.
I'll second it. Motion made by David Rule to recommend Article twenty-two, seconded by Ann Barney. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Six to zero, David. Summer twelve fifty Transport Center. I have a question before we vote on this. Kendall, do you know something about this transport center? We, we don't, I don't really know anything about it, I don't know.
All I know is they came to us a couple of years ago, we supported it. I tried to call them to make calls for people to get rides, and was unable to do that multiple times. So that's why I will not support it.
Did you leave messages, or did it not, or did they not pick up, or?
I believe I left messages and have talked to some. They did not have drivers available when I was trying to arrange for rides.
So those drivers are volunteers, though, right?
They are volunteers, yes.
Well, if it was during.
They have a very limited schedule.
Right. If it was during COVID, I would think that there was a real problem finding volunteers for something like this.
We were still funding them for it.
Do I have anybody that wants to recommend it?
I will recommend it. Maybe it should be investigated some, but.
How long have they been in business, KB?
I'm not really sure, at least three years, though.
Started in two thousand thirteen.
Oh, so it's been a while.
How long have we been using them, or giving them money? Because I only remember three years ago.
I don't remember before then, I've seen a couple of years of repatriation.
Yeah.
Okay, is there a second? David, recommended by David Rule, is there a second? I'll second it. Seconded by Ann Barney. Any questions or comments?
I think we should look into it. I would, I would vote in a positive way, that I think it should be looked into. I mean, if KB is saying that he's called, and where is Arman going if, you know, they're not answering?
Oh, I agree with that.
Yeah, I would, yeah, we should find out more about it.
Yeah, we should.
But it needs to be voted on, too.
Do you get a report or anything from?
They said there's quite a volume of material, so.
About what they, their activities?
About their activities, the fact that they do X number of people per year for transportation, et cetera. But they don't name who it is or where they're from.
Oh.
I believe they, they can't do that.
I don't think legally they can. I don't think legally they can.
Yeah.
It's hip.
So you have no idea, they can't divide it by town, even?
Do you have that in your office? If I came in, would I be able to look at it?
Oh, sure. It's public document.
Any other comments or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 I said aye, and those two said?
I said nay.
I said aye.
You said aye?
Mm-hmm.
It's five to one.
I need, it needs to be looked into.
So, if nobody minds, I will look into that, if it's okay to everybody.
Other, other groups.
Ann, is it okay?
Do give reports by town, you know.
Well, that's probably once in a while, because he said it's a pretty extensive repertoire.
Any other groups that provide rides, too?
You guys do.
Okay, Grafton County senior citizens for twelve thousand dollars. I will make a motion to recommend it. Is there a second?
I'll second one.
Okay, seconded by Sandra Coleman. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Six to zero, David.
I will move the ninety-seven hundred and twenty-two dollars for the Peavy Baker Hospice and Home Health Agency.
I'll second it. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Six to zero, David. Oh, this was something you were going to look into, Fred.
Well, they kind of changed it.
They did change it, yeah.
They just added a character.
Its voices one now?
We're going to take the one out of there.
Yeah, so it should just say Voices Against Violence, correct?
Yes, Voices.
What did it say before, voters or?
They should be against violence, too.
Okay, I'll make a motion to recommend it. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion made by Jeanette Stewart to recommend Article twenty-six, seconded by Kendall Hughes. Is there any question, are there any questions or comments?
She goes, it doesn't have something to do, though, with the police department? Hasn't that been said in the past, as far?
No, that was the Cady one, the C-A-D-Y.
Okay, all right.
Or Katie?
Katie.
Yeah.
Yeah, all right.
Well, they, they do work with the police department, though, to make sure that individuals are protected.
But before Katie was brought up.
Yeah.
Because they said that there weren't others, or there weren't many in town that were getting the money from Katie or the helm. Okay, any questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Six to zero, David.
He has a Katie one.
This is the one, the Katie one.
I will recommend the one thousand dollars for Katie.
I'll second that. Motion made by David Rule to recommend Article twenty-seven, seconded by Ann Barney. Are there any questions or comments?
Well, I guess this is the one I was talking about, as far as the police, and I, I guess it's, don't they do all that with?
I don't know that much about them.
We do not have a, we, correct, come on, we do not have a police officer in school.
I don't believe so, I believe one of our officers does volunteer.
One of our officers spends a lot of time up here and works with them, but he's not.
No, he does not.
One of these officers.
Right.
And, and this program is different than that.
To my knowledge, yes. She's not here, but I, yes, I believe they're different.
Yes.
If you want, I think Claire Moorhead is still the head of that. And I can call her and see exactly what they have, if they do anything with our town.
Well, even if they don't do anything in like the past year, the fact that they're available is important.
I know, but I'm just saying, I'll check it, Claire.
And they do work with the guidance counselors at the school, too, get, especially the high school kids.
Right. So they may be helping Ashland kids at the high school. Probably more important than in the first grade, or something.
Actually, every grade is important.
Yeah, but more likely to need their help.
Okay, Article twenty-seven, recommended by David Rule, seconded by Ann Barney. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Six to zero. Tri-county Community Action.
I will move the thirty-eight hundred and seventy-six dollars.
I'll second it. Okay. Motion made by David Rule to recommend Article twenty-eight, seconded by Ann Barney. They still have programs in Ashland?
Yeah, they're still there.
They are?
Yeah, they still have fuel assistance there. But they provide, wherever they're located, they provide services throughout the three counties. People can apply for these various things.
To appropriate a number like that, though, three thousand eight hundred and seventy-six, that's kind of specific one.
I don't know.
Could I suggest that heat start might be head start instead?
Heat start, but.
Do you see that, Fred?
What's that?
Should say head start instead of heat start?
Oh, yeah. Yes. I'll circle that.
Right. When I email Marissa, I'll put a little note in it.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments?
Just like question of being so specific about right down to the dollar.
Okay. I think they probably put the specifics on paperwork that they handed in to you, did they?
They sent quite a volume of paperwork.
So we could probably find out by going to the town office and looking, Sandra?
Yeah, just kind of pause.
And if not, we can always call.
That's right. Okay, Article twenty-eight. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. KB?
Aye.
Six to zero.
Article twenty-nine is not really a warrant, I mean, an appropriation.
No, it's not appropriation, neither is Article thirty.
Can we skip that?
Article thirty isn't either. Article thirty-one isn't.
I'll move Article thirty-two.
Thirty-two is. I'll make a motion to recommend Article thirty-two, is there a second?
I'll second it.
The ayes are missing in Article thirty-two. Ann, who seconded it? Are there any questions or comments? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Six to zero, David. Okay, so now we have to go to school? Remember, to the proposed budget, we have to add the dollar for the motion that Lee made that night when we were at the meeting?
I'll move Article two, to salary of officers.
And take out moderator?
Yes. Well, no, no, we still want to pay the moderator in Article two.
Oh, someone added this book. Why did she say take it out?
That's in Article one, because we already have a moderator who's, was elected last year.
Oh, okay.
Somebody just left this in.
Got that, I see it now.
And forgot to remember, yeah.
I understand now, David.
Yeah, I had it.
Now I understand.
But we should pay the moderator under Article two, all the fifty bucks.
So David Rule made the motion to recommend Article two? I'll second that. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Six to zero. Article three. I'll make a motion to recommend Article three for four million two hundred ninety-six thousand eight sixty-six.
Right.
Is there a second?
Yeah.
You seconded it?
Yes, I did.
Are there any questions or comments? Okay, there being no questions or comments, all those in favor of Article three signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Six to zero.
I will recommend a no, I don't know if we, that the school, that the committee recommend a no vote on this article. I guess this is.
Yeah, because that was the way that the attorney worded it. If you weren't here, I don't think, KB.
Does the Budget Committee recommend a no vote on this article?
I'll second that. Are there any questions or comments?
I think this is going to be a difficult article.
I do, too, because it's, it's very difficult to understand.
It's already been on the ballot, you know, last March. There's this article, then there's one, two, yeah.
I think it's confusing.
It's going to be confusing for the general public.
Right.
You know, we've been at this, we've looked at it for several times, we've discussed it at length, with even a lawyer present.
I didn't even understand it in the beginning.
Well, can you imagine how the people are going to feel in town?
Well, that's the thing.
The deliberative session is going to be important to speak up, you know, for this, for this article.
Is the school going to do one of those mailers again?
We discussed it the other day, and we are going to finalize that tomorrow night, as to what we're going to do.
Yeah. Well, that's important, it, it does need explanation, and if you do that, that will certainly help. Can't imagine the voters, if they realize that they're going to spend four hundred thousand dollars to buy a building the school district doesn't need, would actually vote for it, but.
Can you imagine what that's going to do?
Well, I think it's so confusing that that's, they don't know how to vote, you know? They might just leave it blank.
That's a possibility. But if both the Budget Committee and the school board are saying vote no, then that's pretty strong language.
But that doesn't matter, I mean, they voted no, the Sletman had voted no before, the town votes it in, so you never know.
Yeah, but.
Now, are the trustees going to be there to explain?
The library trustees? I'm pretty sure the school deliberative session will have a word or two to say, yeah.
And at the town one, too, at the SB two meeting.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm just checking.
Yeah, we show up.
Okay, are there any questions or comments? Okay, are there any questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Wait, wait a minute.
In favor of a no vote.
Okay, okay, we don't got to say that. All those in favor of no vote, say aye. Aye.
The motion is to recommend a no vote, yes.
Right. Sorry, Kendall. So, one, two, three, four. What did you say? It's five to one?
No.
Or did you?
Everybody said six.
You said it, too?
Six.
Six to zero?
Yeah.
Okay. At the SB 2 meeting on February 4th, if everybody could try to be there. And also, we had a problem some years where people were on the Budget Committee but didn't want to sit up front. I would appreciate it if you would sit up front, if all of us would, because then it shows the town that we do have quite a few people on the Budget Committee, so.
Just there was only one person that didn't want to watch. She's not on.
Okay, is, are there any other comments or? Then I think, and Ann, just so you'll know, I think we're all set. The town, the SB 2 meeting. Right?
For the deliberate obsession, I suppose. Oh, revenues. Did we vote on revenues?
No, we didn't.
We don't vote on revenues.
We don't vote on revenues.
No, because they won't be, they won't be final until September.
So the estimated revenues that are put in the budget that we sign, we don't vote on them?
My point is that they're not official until September.
Okay.
You can vote on them if you want, but they don't mean anything. That's part of the problem with how they set the tax rate.
Right, yes.
Any other questions, Sean?
What is a deliberate obsession?
February 4th?
The town unit?
No, for the town. When's the school one, David?
February 7th, Tuesday evening.
Is the school one here in the cafeteria?
Yeah, it'll be over in like 10 minutes, but.
The town one, I believe, is in the gymnasium?
It's here.
It's going to be here?
Yes.
Oh, because usually it's in the gymnasium.
It was here last year and it worked well, so.
Oh, okay.
It'll be here February 4th, 10:00 a.m.
Yeah, I noticed it was 10:00 a.m. What time is the school one?
It's a migrate.
It should say on the warrant, or. 6:00 p.m.
Yeah, six.
February 7th in school, Ashland Elementary Cafeteria.
Six?
Yeah, six in the evening.
I hope. I don't want to come at 6:00 a.m.
Let's see, February 7th.
Okay, does anybody else have any comments? The audience, what's that? 7:30, I'm adjourning the meeting at 7:33 p.m. We did pretty good.